All right, Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
Excused.
Commissioner Egenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Mr. Janowski.
Excused, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Not here.
Heard from him?
He may come a little late.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Here, thank you very much. And, does anyone want to make a motion about the minutes of December 2nd?
Most to accept, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? There is one little thing on the minutes that I noticed that is a little misleading, and that is that under roll call, it says absent Cruz prior notice given from both. Did he clone himself? Not, nothing major, but it does imply that he's two people.
Madam Chair, one other point of order, if I would, under old business, the numbering convention is incorrect. It's numbered 1, 3, and 4. I don't know if that's done on purpose, but it's, it should reflect 1, 2, and 3.
Ah, okay. Well, we have a motion, a motion and, and we have a motion on the floor for the agenda first, so we did not vote on that yet. So, hold off, hold off. You're getting a little too enthusiastic over there, Brian. Okay, so, all in favor of accepting the agenda, or I mean, the minutes, sorry?
With that correction.
With that correction, thank you. If they, if you're amenable to that motion maker in second or, okay. Okay, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now, can we accept the agenda as amended with 1, 2, and 3, under old business?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. All right, we have any communications, Patrick?
No additional communications.
Alrighty, thank you. And we have a section for public comment, but seeing that there are no members of the public, shall we skip that, or do we still need to open it for, for the record, open the public hearing for the record?
I don't think so.
There's no one in the audience, so we can just acknowledge that.
All right, there's no one in the audience. Very good. We have no public hearings, so we'll move right into old business. Patrick, tell us all about the item number, excuse me, item number 1, zoning ordinance discussion, trees and woodland preservation, and I'm fighting a sneeze, sorry.
Sure. So, at the Planning Commission meeting on August 19th this year, we introduced the tree preservation ordinance, and prior to that, there was a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the board on July 30th to review, to receive a presentation from Professor Dick Norton and one of his students about some work that the University of Michigan has been doing for the, its curriculum, and using Canton as an example, and last winter semester, Planning Division staff participated with the University of Michigan in their environmental planning class in that effort. And so, the summary of that was presented during the July 30th joint meeting. And concurrently, we had been working on the tree preservation ordinance. So, a few weeks after that presentation on July 30th, we presented the draft tree ordinance at the August 19th meeting. And, we have hyperlinks in our staff memo, so rather than have to put everything back into the packet and make it even longer than it needs to be, we can just refer to the hyperlinks. So, there are hyperlinks there to the August 19th, September 16th, and October 21st agendas and meeting packets. And at those meetings, we've reviewed sections 1 through 6 of the tree preservation ordinance. And this evening, we propose to go through sections 7, 9, and 10. And we recommend skipping section 8. Section 8 deals with the mitigation, where we're going to get into some pretty detailed standards, some mathematical standards, and some different scenarios that we'll eventually be presenting to the Planning Commission to answer questions of different scenario planning, what happens when certain types of trees are removed, how does mitigation look in different scenarios? And that could take at least 1 or 2 meetings, depending on the type of information that we look at and that we want to come back and revise for consideration. So, what we wanted to do is to review all of the other sections of the ordinance first. And once we have a grasp of all the other sections of the ordinance, then the very last one we can deal with is tree mitigation. And then, once we get through tree mitigation, we can make any revisions before setting the public hearing, which will probably be in maybe mid to late winter of '25. So, to present the, the draft itself, the draft is dated July 24th. And, it is, it hasn't changed since our last meeting. When we've met on the ordinance in August, September, and, or, August, September, October, we've taken notes and will incorporate any notes, questions, in future drafts or future presentation, once we get to mitigation. Because at a pre, at least one previous meeting, we had some detailed discussion about some mitigation items that we'll address when we get to section 8. So, for tonight, we wanted to review section 7, 9, and 10. Section 7 is the tree removal permit procedures. And the procedures are pretty standard for a tree removal application. They require a tree survey, a mitigation plan, the site plan, if the tree removal is part of a site plan. It includes the review process, the decision criteria, term of the permit, and performance guarantee. To make sure that the quality and the accuracy of the plans is sufficient, the tree surveys are required to be prepared by an arborist, and mitigation plans are required to be prepared by a landscape architect. Oftentimes, an arborist is more qualified to review trees in terms of the tree survey, because they have qualifications to look at certain species, certain conditions. There can be landscape architects who qualify as arborists, but whoever's doing the survey needs to be qualified in what information they're putting on the plan. And then, for the tree mitigation plans, those are the plans where things are required to be put in the ground, whether it's tree planting or other types of environmental mitigation. And those plans are best prepared by a landscape architect. For example, the plans that come before the Planning Commission for Development Proposals, oftentimes, when you have a large set of plans, that, that tree survey most often is done by an arborist, and the landscape plan is required to be prepared by a registered landscape architect. So, that makes that part consistent with our zoning ordinance. The Planning Division staff reviews and approves tree removal permits, but it allows staff to refer the application to the Planning Commission. Also, the draft ordinance includes 7 decision criteria that emphasize preservation. It evaluates the natural and physical features of the subject area and the surrounding area, and it provides for removal standards and cross-references the mitigation standards of section 8. So, those decision criteria are things that staff, and if necessary, the Planning Commission reviews in determining whether to grant a tree removal permit or to require plan changes to change the impact in order to get that tree removal permit. So, that's kind of a summary of the, the tree removal permit procedures. Are there any questions about those before moving on?
So, what kind of circumstances would you, would you envision deferring a decision to the Planning Commission as opposed to making, making them internally?
I think if somebody was proposing a mitigation measure that was unusual, or there were things that, from a staff standpoint, that we might be pushing the applicant on, and the applicant may want that referred to the Planning Commission, or if it's something where there's a lot of subjectivity in it, and if it's a significant development or a significant, significant change, it's something that we may want to refer to the Planning Commission, because in staff's evaluation, if it's, if it's highly subjective, among staff, we may have a lot of questions, we might not have a lot of agreement, or we just want another decision-making body that we can present it to. There may be cases where we look at things, and we might think, based on the subjective nature of it, we may have some initial recommendations, but the Planning Commission may see it another way. And especially for large developments that the Planning Commission may be seeing anyway, those would be somewhat helpful to refer to the Planning Commission, because there may be decisions that the Planning Commission makes at the site plan level that may change the tree removal permit. So, there may be cases where if they want to get the tree removal permit done sooner than site plan review, we might require them to go to the Planning Commission for that. In some cases, there are applicants who try to get a permit before site plan review, because they want to start tree clearing. Cases like that, we try to get them to wait. But, if they're insisting on it, that may be something we go to the Planning Commission on to, for a decision.
How could they start tree clearing before they had a site plan review? I, kinda like, seems kinda backwards to me.
It is. Most of the time, we try to talk people out of doing it, especially if they haven't even gone through the site plan process yet. Sometimes, applicants want to clean up parts of the property, if they're trying to market it or some other reason. And in those cases, staff can issue permits to allow a minimal amount of brush clearing or even some minor tree removal, as long as a lot of the trees are retained and the ordinance is upheld. In some other cases, it may be a matter of, there's a certain time from spring to fall when there are limits on clearing because of a, I think it's in, either an endangered species or a protected species of bat. And oftentimes, the State Department of Eagle won't give permits if there's tree clearing in that protected area. So, if their state permits are intertwined with site plan review, sometimes applicants know that they want to break ground in the summer, but they want to start their tree clearing before that. So, in some cases, we'll try to work with them, especially if their site plan is far enough along. And in some cases, they've either gotten site plan approval or they're very close to it.
Isn't it the Indiana bat?
Yeah.
Maybe they got a brush hog for Christmas.
Yeah, too. Okay, thank you.
No, I'm, I'm always thinking of the resident. These are all really planned developments, right? Primarily. Are we going down to the residential level yet in these ordinances now? Would a resident, single-family resident be affected by these?
There will be single-family residents that are affected. One of the things that we haven't done in the ordinance is, there's a part of the ordinance where it addresses tree removal exemptions, where someone can remove a certain number of trees without a permit. And in that section, previously, we've left it blank in terms of how many trees that they can remove and what the lot size is. Right now, the ordinance states that if there's an occupied parcel, less than 2 acres, they're exempt from permitting. And, we're gonna look to do something similar, but to limit the number of protected trees that they can remove, and to look at some scenarios where we move that parcel threshold downward. So, we'll have some information in terms of whether it applies to something like 1 acre or half acre, quarter acre, and then looking at however many number of trees. So, let's say if there's a, if, if we were to allow for removal of up to 5 trees, you know, per acre or fraction thereof per year, most homeowners that do tree removal would probably be exempt, because most homeowners, most of our homeowners live in subdivisions or site condos, and when they do tree removal on their property, usually it's 1 tree, maybe a couple trees. Rarely is it 5 or more. So, that's one example where they would be subject to the ordinance in the sense that they would have to look at it or call to ensure that they don't need a tree permit. But ultimately, there will be some permit requirements, depending on where we set those thresholds.
And I'm really asking 2 points, residents and HOAs? Because HOAs have larger parcels, and they may be affected, some are torn up. And you know what stuck in my mind, when you said an arborist and a landscape architect? And I went cha-ching. That's what I was thinking. So, I know if you gotta do that, it's added cost, so that's why I'm asking those specific questions.
Yeah, and those are, those are good questions, and those are, and I'm glad we're, we're doing these discussions now before we go back and fill in those areas on number of protected trees and acres that someone can remove, and having the discussion before we get into mitigation, because those are considerations that we, we know that we'll want to make, especially if we're talking about those now at this point, where when we start looking at those mitigation areas in more detail and looking to fill in the, the different, number of exempt protected trees and acreages to look at the sensitivity of cost. So, if there's a single-family homeowner that's just removing a few trees, that, something of that could be cost prohibitive. If it's a large HOA and they're removing a bunch of trees, there are other exemptions in the ordinance that allow for removal of dead or dying trees or trees that have become hazardous, or even certain types of species. So, if an HOA is just going into the common area and removing certain types of trees, if they're otherwise exempt trees, then it may be just a matter of them working with the Planning Division to make sure that they only remove trees that don't require a permit. So, that would exempt them from the arborist requirement. They would still have to replant the trees if they were required on a site plan, but it's possible they might not even a landscape architect if they're using their previously approved landscape plan.
Thank you.
How do you guys, how do you guys enforce that? Because like, like, my HOA, we had some tornado damage a couple years ago, and the trees came down, you know? I don't think anything's been planted to replace it. We also have a whole bunch of homeowners, I mean, our subdivision, which shall remain nameless, but is right across the street. The, the, we also have a whole lot of, of Norway maples that
I'm so sorry.
Girdling themselves, yeah. And people don't understand that they're dying. They're, they're like, out there pruning them, trying to get them to come back. And, they're, they're just gonna die. And there've been people who've just cut down all their street trees and haven't replaced them.
So, so the answer is how do we enforce that? It's slowly, right now. So, we actually, slowly.
Ah, okay.
So, we were looking around some aerials after the tornado, and we saw not just the immediately affected developments were missing trees, but a bunch of other ones going back many decades had street trees that were missing that were required. So, our, the first step is we, we sent out an email to all the HOAs and said, "Hey, you guys, remember those trees that you had on your site plan, your landscaping plan? You gotta have those. Start thinking about replacing that." We have received from, from complaints from one HOA that had to preserve open space and had a bunch of trees that have been cutting them down. We received complaints from folks next door that they haven't done that. So, on that one, we're a bit more active. We've gone out there and actually walked the site and say, "You gotta start getting these trees back." We do understand that trees aren't cheap, especially if you have to remove them. So, one of the things we did is with our current tree planting contract, if an HOA comes in and gets a certain threshold, they get to plant at the same price per unit that we do, which is really pretty good. Our tree removal and trimming contract is gonna be renewed or rebid this year, end of this year, and we're gonna do similar language in that, and that will really help. So, we're, right now, we're trying to make it easier to do it, instead of showing up and writing tickets or notice of violations.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's hopeful. I know, like, like, a lot of my neighbors have just cut those trees down, and the, the street trees, the ones between the sidewalk and the street. And, and, you know, one neighbor has a lot where the street curves around, and they had like, like, more than 5 that they just cut down.
Were they diseased?
They were Norway maples that were girdling themselves, so they were dying or dead. And, I happened to ask her. I said, "Are you guys gonna replace those?" And she said, "Well, eventually," you know, but it's, I don't think people understand that they can't just cut those down and not replace them.
Yeah, and it's, it's, on the enforcement side, it's fun looking at, because some HOA documents clearly say who's responsible for those trees. Is it the adjacent homeowner? Some say the street is a common element, and the HOA is responsible for all. Some, early on, they didn't even think about it, because they hadn't had experience removing and replacing trees. So, it's, there's a lot of nerdy detail work
Oh, yeah.
With some of these.
Well, you're just the nerd to detail that work, aren't you?
I'm trying.
I mean that as a compliment, of course.
Yes, yes.
Can I ask one more? You sent an email. We had a neighbor that got an email. I, I'm president of the HOA. I didn't get an email. So, I don't know, who did they go out to? I don't remember getting one.
Yeah, so, it would have been, we have, what's the fancy time, title for Emma's job position?
Resident Service Advocate.
A resident service advocate has contacts for all the, the HOAs, and that's what it went out to. I can't say whether or not it was the president, or a secretary, or a former president from 10 years ago who we've got on there. We can get you hooked up with what that letter was.
I may not wanna be, but, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I know I didn't get the email, that, because I heard someone, one of our neighbors referred to it. I said, "I never saw that email."
Yep, and we, we have heard from one HOA that, and I don't know which one, so I can't even point fingers, that they, they spiced up the letter that they sent out to their members, where we just said, "Hey, guys, remember, we need to get these trees. It's required. Work with us." The letter that they sent out to their membership said, "If you don't plant the trees, it's a violation and you could get fined." Which we never had. They, they added their own little spice for the cooking on there.
I don't know. And that, that's why I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to go by hearsay. I want to hear directly, so that when I deal with it, I know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So, yeah, and I, I didn't like the direction. It was kinda animosity that were. I try to keep things calm. That's just the way I am.
Well, I think that's smart.
Clarence, did you, did you guys, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Flattery there, but.
It's all right. I like.
I mean, did you, do you guys have an HOA email that you monitor, or is it your?
No.
Because that might be the issue, too.
We're so small.
Yeah.
Unlike the other, we only got 20 houses.
Because we have like, HOA board at our HOAs.
Yeah, it's 4 members of the board.
Yeah, so that may be something to consider. Just get a Gmail.
Exactly. Everybody's on the board, pretty much, and they got information, and they share, and I say, "I never saw that." And, as a president, I can't say anything. So, all right, thank you.
Get that out to you.
Thank you for saying that, because I didn't even believe that it went out because of what you said. Anyway.
Okay.
I gave gender. I shouldn't have. Sorry.
I didn't remember. I don't remember what you said. Anything else?
Nothing.
Anybody else on the commission? Have anything? Okay.
Do you have a blanket, blanket request, remove all cottonwood trees?
All cottonwood? Well, they're, they're under the exempt species, so we'll, well, they're currently exempt, so.
I see they're exempt, so let's just, let's just put a line in there. We can immediately just remove all cottonwood trees.
All cottonwood trees?
All cottonwood trees.
You don't like the cotton?
I hate them.
Pretty strong there.
I hate them.
I mean, some people are very allergic.
I don't like dead trees, but.
I, you know, I'll live with a dead tree more than cotton.
What? So, one of the things we're actually gonna do in future drafts, which we've discussed this with folks much smarter than us, is instead of hardwire in the trees, that's in this current draft, is instead, say, as adopted by resolution, because Norway maple, everyone was saying, "Plant these trees, they'll grow anywhere."
Right.
And then, we got some experience, and it turned out not to be good. We have some site plans where it says mulberries for street trees, which is awesome if you like to have fun colors on your car from the birds eating it. But, so, there's, there's a lot of.
We learn.
Yes, we, we learn, and we want to make it easier to change. Even right now, in our corporate park overlay district standard, it says, "You shall plant Norway maples." And so, that, that'll be one change to look forward to, is that this will, that'll probably be pulled out and made easier, but still kind of have some formal gravitas to it.
Yeah, I prefer white bear poop myself. I don't know if anybody else does on my car. I mean, this, as opposed to mulberry color.
Okay.
Don't you? I mean.
That doesn't stain as much.
Doesn't, yeah. And the sidewalks, too. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, moving right along.
The next 2 parts to go over are fairly straightforward. The first is to allow for forest stewardship plans. These would be fairly rare. The Department of Natural Resources, they have a forest stewardship program. And it allows for a landowner, a lot of the landowners who have them are up north and have large tracts of land. And the reason for having them is that they can be a plan that's approved by Department of Natural Resources that allows for management of that forest. And, there's an ordinance in Ann Arbor Township that has a section on the forest stewardship plans. And essentially, what we've done is we've, we've used that in our draft ordinance and adapted it, where if somebody wants to have a forest stewardship plan, it could be a large landowner, or it could be an HOA, they could use that plan to remove trees in their woodland area and not necessarily have to get a tree permit, if they're doing so in accordance with their plan. The plan, it's, it's a long-term commitment. I think in Canton Township, it would be pretty rare for someone to have a forest stewardship plan, but we wanted to include it in our ordinance as an option, just in case someone wanted to be able to cut trees within a woodland area and not have to get a permit each time. This would allow them to be able to do so and, and go through the forest stewardship planning process through the state. And with that state-approved plan, which I think requires an arborist to prepare, we would allow them to use that as part of their management locally. And I don't, I don't know a lot about forest stewardship plans. I've, I've read through some of the ones that are available online, but I've never gone through one before. So, there may be questions that we might not be able to answer, but we could ask our state DNR rep if we have any.
I'm, I can only think of 1 place, maybe in the township, that something like this might come into play, would be, I can't ever pronounce the name of the, the park.
Oh, ZB West?
Yeah. Is there any, where else would you envision this coming into play in the township?
Might be Lower Rouge Trail. Most of the trees that are removed there would most likely be exempt, because if they're along a stream bank or something. But, there may be a large public area where, if we're subject to our own tree ordinance, we may want to have one, or if there's a nonprofit that manages. Or, there may be an HOA, if they've got a large woodland area and they want to actively manage it, they may want to have one. But, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have anyone. I've never heard of anyone come forward with any interest in it. It was just something we included, just to allow people an option if we wanted them, you know, if they wanted not to do a tree permit every time. But, this will all depend on the number of exemptions. I think if we're exempting a lot of types of trees, like dead trees, dying trees, trees that might become hazardous, or species that are undesirable, the more exemptions we have for those types of things, the less likely we'll see anything like a forest stewardship plan. And then, the last section is tree protection during construction. And, there's some expansion on the existing tree protection requirements. And it essentially requires trees that remain on a site plan to be protected. So, most of the time, that's putting snow removal fence around the critical root zone or around the canopy of the tree, to make sure that developers are not parking vehicles underneath a tree or storing materials underneath a tree or grading it. You know, if there's a, someone has a tree in their yard, they occasionally park under the tree. If it's in a rural area, sometimes that's not a big deal. But if a site is actively under construction and there is vehicles parking underneath a tree without that protective snow fence, that'll eventually have an impact on the roots. And many times, if trees are not, if they're not adequately protected during construction, a lot of trees end up getting lost, because they're within the perimeter of a project. So, this would reinforce some of the existing requirements for tree protection. And there are things that we look at from a building and engineering division when they start putting in their protection fence in the area that they're supposed to preserve. So, we keep that in there in the tree preservation article, just to make sure that when there's a tree removal permit, it's in conjunction with site construction, that they're doing the preservation part of it.
So, the critical root zone is, according to the definitions, the drip line of the tree? At least according to the, the picture, yeah, thank you, the graphic on page 5-7? Do we, are we sure that that's really? Oh, okay, it defines it a little bit. Defines it a little bit. The area extending out from the trunk of the tree to a distance of 1 and 1/2 feet per inch of DBH drip. Okay. I'm just curious, because I've heard from people that the, the roots actually extend quite a bit farther than the drip line. So, I guess that's the critical root zone.
Yeah, they can. And this is a, this is a graph, we have a graphic there. Yeah, they can. And this is a, this is a graph, we have a graphic there. It's a fairly older graphic that was copied from somewhere else. We'll update that graphic to match our text. And we'll also be having our landscape architect consultant and maybe one or two of our arborists consultants to look at that as well, just to verify that that's an appropriate calculation or if they have any recommendations on that.
Okay.
It does vary from species to species. Some of them are deeper, some of them have taproots, some of them have taproots and laterals, some of them are all surface. That's kind of a decent middling stab.
Yeah, it's easy to look at it and say whether it's right or not when they put the stuff in. Okay. Anything else from the commission?
Is there, I guess I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. There's not an objective standard as to what critical root zone is. And the reason I ask is I'm looking at root zone protection here and the last sentence says, a larger protection area may be required based on the recommendations of the township arborist. I guess I want to be sure that we're not going to get, I hope I don't offend anyone here, the arborist that's making these protected areas larger than what they really need to be. Yeah, I've, you know, there's been so much argument and all that about protection of trees and saving of trees and what it costs development and all that. I, it seems to be very, opens the door for possible contention there. But I don't know the answer to that. What, how do you address that though?
Yeah, I think that would probably have to be, there would have to be some kind of a reasoning for it, whether it's the species of the tree or if it's something to do with slope or soil or erosion or something unique to the site itself. Where I don't think we could, we could do a blanket one and just increase the size of an entire critical root zone without looking at individual circumstances for species and slope. So we could look at possibly adding language in there to say, you know, we can require a larger barrier, but it has to be based on, you know, like we've got seven evaluation criteria when we get another permit. We could refer back to those and kind of ground it in something so that if someone is aggrieved by a decision, you know, they can challenge us on any one of those seven criteria.
I think we're ready to look at signs.
Okay, great. So signs. So we originally started reviewing the sign ordinance. That's Article 6A of the zoning ordinance about a year ago. And we've made some revisions since we looked at it originally back in November of '23 and since January of this year. And so we have links in the memo for this evening that refer back to the planning commission meeting packet for January 22 of this year. And it included a lot of background information, including a PowerPoint presentation that was done at a joint meeting between the board and the planning commission. We also included an outline of the zoning ordinance amendment. At the October 21 meeting of this year, we went through, we started to go through the sections of the ordinance. And the only change since the October draft is we've fixed one type of graphical error that we found during our review so that the sections are aligned with the table of contents. So at the October 21 meeting, we looked at the first four sections. We looked at the purpose and intent, the scope of application, the authority, and the sign type definitions. If there are any definitions that are unrelated to sign types, these definitions will be located in Section 1.03 of the ordinance, which is the section of the ordinance where we have our general definitions for the entire zoning ordinance. So for Section 4 that deals with sign type definitions, we may refer back to that during our review of the sign ordinance when we want to look at how are certain signs defined or if we want to define them different. So we can always go back to it, but we're just going through the sections in order as much as possible. So for our current discussion on the sign ordinance, we've got four different sections to continue with this evening. So we left off at Section 4, so we continue Section 5, which is prohibited signs. And this section lists 26 different sign types that are prohibited. Many of them are defined in Section 6A.04. So some of these signs are defined of what they are just to be further regulated or in some cases prohibited. The introductory sentence to Section 5 states that the following signs are prohibited unless otherwise specifically permitted in this ordinance. So there may be other areas of the zoning ordinance where we have exceptions to those prohibited signs. For example, banner signs are listed as prohibited, but in certain non-residential districts noted in a subsequent section, they're included with regulations. So it's just a way to try to prohibit them where they generally don't belong, but to have certain exceptions for those types of signs. So before going any further, are there any questions about the list of prohibited signs or why they were introduced that way?
Well, Patrick, this isn't, it's just. Five, which is, you know. Says official signs as defined in Article 6A. Then there's a semicolon, a dash, a comma.
Sorry, what page is that?
Oh, in the packet? Thank you. That part.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at it though, thinking what the heck did this?
Oh, I think that's just part of the, I think that's a remnant of the track changes.
Track changes, yeah.
Yeah, it's just you're seeing, you're seeing something that somebody crossed out as a hyphen. They took out a comma and replaced it with a semicolon.
All there, yeah. It's all there.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm thinking, geez.
I think a winky face would be very appropriate there.
Well, it'd seem nice.
I mean, we'll let you have this sign, winky wink.
Okay, yep, thank you. I couldn't get past it.
Apparently. I mean, good eye.
Yeah, and in this, on this page, Section 1.03, we did track changes because it's easier to do that in the non-sign article regulations because of just the text that we're dealing with. But the sign standards themselves, in large part, they've been uprooted. So to do a track changes in Article 6A for everything, they would be illegible based on the number of changes.
At one store that seems to have a heck.
Store or restaurant?
Restaurant.
You're talking about the one at Hanford in Kansas?
Is that the one near Hanford?
Right on Hanford, right on the corner.
Okay.
Change, it changes all the time.
Yeah, they're not supposed to change. And we've included here flashing signs. So signs that contain flashing, blinking or strobe lights or has the appearance of lighting associated with emergency vehicle lighting, traffic signals or official signs. So we've addressed it there, but if there's any other type of movement or anything like that, basically we want the lighting to be static.
Yeah, wouldn't that be, I mean, would we want to broaden that language to include not just flashing, but changing lights?
Whatever neon color you go with, stick with it.
Or.
I thought that that's what the neon.
It just says, the flashing signs one? It prohibits flashing, blinking or strobe lights. Something that looks like a.
But it doesn't say you can't change.
Yeah, I mean, there is something in here about.
It did say that.
There was something about animated signs, simulate movement, but that's not really what it is either.
We prohibit, so animated signs is included in prohibited signs. And yeah, scrolling text or graphics. And. So we can go back into flashing and be more encompassing with it of, you know, changing light, either intensity, color, things of that nature.
Is it a concern, drivers, passengers? Is that the concern? Drivers?
Drivers.
Okay.
Just being distracted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if someone's looking for something off the road, if they're trying to find it and, you know, they're looking in that direction, we allow signs to be illuminated. They can be illuminated, you know, the entire time, even when they're closed, they can have their illumination up. And that's the wall sign and the ground sign. So there's methods of communication in terms of if someone's looking for something, they can find it. But what we don't want is to something pop up in someone's peripheral vision and then have them pull their eyes away from the road.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Could you just put in? Under prohibited signs, include like in the animated signs, signs that change color? I mean, I might want to make it a little more specific than that, but that's, we're concerned about the changing neon or whatever.
Yeah, we can look at those to see. In some cases, it could be covered by both because by something flashing, it could be creating an animated effect. And then also under, and then it could also be covered now that we're really looking at something specific. Under G, there's certain types of illumination. And there's traffic hazards, illumination that could distract motorists or otherwise create a traffic or pedestrian hazard. That gets into, if we had anything like that, we have to be working with our ordinance division and our police department in terms of what they might consider distracting. And then we have accent of use of bare bulbs, including neon or light emitting diodes or LEDs or other luminaires to outline windows, doors or other architectural features. You know, we may look at that part in G under certain types of illumination for anything that changes color. So we might be hitting that in a few different sections just to cover our bases. It might seem redundant, but because a lot of the creativity and technology that's out there, we just want to make sure that what we intend to cover is covered.
Right, and there are unintentional consequences too. I might, I might say that accent would apply, but maybe it should clarify, you know, signage too is an architectural feature. I don't know. An accent, I don't know. That doesn't make sense because you want your signage lit, but. I'd love to know how that, how that business got their sign permitted.
I think they got approval for the lights themselves, but they didn't get approval for anything that was changing or no flashing, no color changes. It had to be a static color, which a lot of those new installations, sometimes the technology allows for options.
Right.
But it also means you can turn it off and turn it to a static color.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on prohibited signs? Okay, and then during the course of our review, we can always jump back to some of these as well as we move forward. So in future months, or if you see something in the packet after that you want to go back to, we can always do that. The next section in Section 6 is covering signs that don't require a sign permit. And this section has nine different sign types that, where a sign can be installed without a permit, subject to the signs meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So some of the exceptions are decorations, maintenance, window signs, certain types of temporary signs and maintenance activities. So one item, for example, window signs. The window signs, when we get into the window sign standards, there's a certain percentage of window area that can be covered. So when businesses put in window signage, they're supposed to follow the rules. And the building division includes sign standards that businesses get that they can refer to to determine how much window signage they can get and how much they can put up. So that's a case where if a business wants to put window signage, like stickers or something like that in the window, they don't necessarily have to come and get a permit each time they do it, but they do need to comply with the ordinance rules. So once the sign ordinance is adopted, in addition to the ordinance, we'll also have handout materials for businesses that can be user-friendly, things that can be accessed online where if they want to know how much window signage, they'll be able to go to the rules and be able to figure that out and we'll have published rules on that. But this will just be a case where they don't necessarily have to get a permit to do it as long as they're complying with it. And if they don't comply, our ordinance enforcement division, like they do in a lot of cases when they're patrolling around, they'll catch a lot of the obvious stuff. Some of the other things under the exemptions are signs that are non-commercial. And we, in a future meeting, like all these cross-references to 6A.09, we'll go into those at a future meeting in terms of what the sign standards, in terms of how large these signs can be, how many of them you can have. And there are regulations by the sign type and the zoning district that you're in. So one example here would be a non-commercial sign. So if someone is doing a non-commercial sign in their yard, like if it was a political sign or some other kind of non-commercial content, there's a limit in terms of how many signs could be in someone's yard and what the square footage is, but someone wouldn't have to come to the township to get a permit every time they do a temporary non-commercial type of sign. So that's something where if somebody wants to know what the rules are, we'll have some user-friendly ways for people to find out and to make sure that they're complying. And if they're not complying, then, you know, a lot of times ordinance will respond to these types of things on a complaint-driven basis unless they drive by and happen to see something that doesn't comply. unless they drive by and happen to see something that doesn't comply. But this is just exempting them from the requirement to get a permit. It doesn't exempt them from regulation. So any questions or comments about these, these nine items? The next section is 6A.07, dealing with substitution. And the section simply states that non-commercial messages shall be permitted on any sign that's constructed, erected, or maintained in compliance with the ordinance. The reason for that is it comes out of a federal case law and comes out of the case law where some sign regulations had regulated commercial signs and also regulated non-commercial signs differently. And in some cases, some ordinances back in the day would allow for some signs to have commercial content, but would prohibit non-commercial content. And it was a case that reached the U.S. Supreme Court, and the court had basically ruled that you can't allow commercial speech and not allow non-commercial speech in the same time, place, and manner. So this is just a way of saying that if somewhere in our ordinance we're regulating commercial content or something, something of a commercial nature, we're regulating that. If, if for some other, if for some reason we don't include any kind of content neutrality in terms of commercial versus non-commercial, this section is just a catch-all that says, if anywhere in this ordinance where we regulate commercial speech, just know that on those signs, you can put non-commercial messages. So that at no point is our ordinance ever favoring commercial speech over non-commercial speech. So it's a federal legal requirement, but a lot of ordinances call out a special section called substitution, just so that if it ever comes up, it's its own section and easy to find.
What would a non-commercial message be?
Could be political speech, could be religious speech.
Oh, okay.
Could be political, it could be even an issue. It couldn't be, it could be something unrelated to an election or a candidate. It could be just related to a, a political issue that's during non-election time that people want to speak out on.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last section that we have for this evening is Section 8, general sign provisions. And this is a section that includes general provisions that would apply to all signage. It includes some pretty non-controversial items. Or anything that we can change, we can change, but it's generally intended to be non-controversial, just dealing with general items of construction, maintenance, location, and clearance, methods for measuring the area and setback, methods of measuring illumination, and that signs have to be accessory to some on-premise use. So the specific sign standards for the zoning districts are addressed in Article 9, which we'll deal with next month. The purpose of this is if there's any general sign provision that deals with maintenance, or how do we measure it, that doesn't really belong in any other section. This is a section to put it in, just general sign provisions. So anything that we add to it or change to it, we can easily do that. And we can also include cross-references to other parts of the code. So if there are certain things we want to emphasize elsewhere in the code that we want to bring back to this Section 8, we can put in cross-references there.
Far less formal if we just called it potpourri section. It's that drawer in, in the kitchen where...
Junk drawer.
The junk drawer.
Yeah. You can find the string if you can find the string, okay.
Yeah, so if things come up throughout the process and we want to add something, if we're not sure what section to add it to, this would be that section more than likely. Well, if there's no other questions on that, we'll take the notes that we have here based on the lighting. We won't, we probably won't update the ordinance yet. We'll just compile a bunch of comments throughout the process. And then, once we've looked through the sign code once, we'll bring back any additional changes that we'll look at once more before setting a public hearing, just to make sure that we've addressed any comments, questions, concerns. And then, the next month will be, will be a major one. Next January, next month. We'll deal with Article 9 that deals with specific sign standards based on sign type and district. And that's where we'll get into a lot of our commercial signage, temporary residential signage, and the like.
Hey, shall we talk about wireless communication, telecommunications?
Sure. So we don't have a lot to present on that this month. At the September and October meeting, we talked about the section of the zoning ordinance that deals with wireless telecommunications facilities. Excuse me. And in the October packet, we included a more detailed background and a proposed outline. So our cover memo kind of repeats some of what we did last month. So we have, we've, we've started the draft text itself. And we have, we haven't drafted a complete ordinance yet. We're still in the process of looking through other municipal ordinances and doing some best practice analysis. And we want to do that, we don't want to put the ordinance together piecemeal. We want to make sure we can get a full ordinance once we introduce it. But what we can do at this point is to address some of the easier things. And the easier things are going into Section 6.02S, which deals with radio, television, and cellular telephone towers. Even that title is, is quite outdated. And so we're going to call that wireless telecommunications facilities. That's going to address everything. And as you see in the red strike through, right now, the only things our ordinance regulates are setbacks, fencing, and general compliance with state and federal regulations. The only other areas of the ordinance where we'll see regulations for wireless telecommunications are in the zoning districts themselves, where there are special land uses in the light industrial and the general industrial. As we get more into this ordinance, we'll be dealing more with zoning districts. And we'll be bringing forward zoning district regulations during a future draft. What we wanted to do with the current draft is just to put in the purpose and intent statement and some definitions. The purpose and intent statement is just general compliance with state and federal laws, making sure that we comply with those laws while also protecting public health, safety, and welfare. A lot of the, the, the purpose and intent statements that we have in the draft ordinance are pretty boilerplate for Michigan municipal ordinances. So there's not a lot there that's outside of the mainstream, but we can tweak that as we go forward. The only other part that we wanted to introduce was a series of definitions. And these definitions are taken mostly directly from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the Small Cell Wireless Act. And a lot of these are copied and pasted and put into our definitions, even though they are almost verbatim to state law. We figured that we would include those in the ordinance at this time, just to give us a sense of what types of facilities that we're going to be regulating. And that when we get into specifics in terms of measurements and feet and inches, those are things that are out of state law. They're not anything that staff came up with. So it just gives us a sense of the type of things that we'll be looking at and the, the subject matter that we'll be getting into. So the intent there is just to be consistent with state law with our definitions. And then, as we get into the ordinance itself, we'll be using these terms throughout the ordinance and referring back to the definition section. But this is just a way of getting something on paper in terms of our ordinance. And there was kind of our stopping point, and we included the rest of our, our outline. We underlined in blue those section headers. And we put a little bit of content in terms of, in italics, in terms of what that future subsection will address. But we don't have any regulatory text in any of these sections. A lot of them are just section headers, just to indicate what we're going to be addressing in the future and to put some markers down in terms of progress that we've made and progress that we intend to make over the next couple of months. So... Yes. Yeah, the wireless industry has been, they've been pretty aggressive in, in showing that they, they want to expand in Canton. And some of them have included some, I'll call them lower-level propagation maps, showing from their end of things where there are gaps in coverage. And so we, we acknowledge that, you know, they're, they're doing their best to fill gaps. And we want to try to be as accommodating as we can with our ordinance, because right now, we only allow them as special land uses in light industrial and general industrial, which means those areas are along predominantly Michigan Avenue and in the northeast part of the community, where somebody can put a tower. I understand we have a tower behind the building. And there are certain areas of our zoning ordinance that provide for exemptions for township-owned facilities. And it's something that we might want to explore a little bit more in our wireless ordinance in terms of if we want to make things a little bit easier of a process if it's on municipal property. Because for some tower uses, there is a township and municipal objective to having areas where if we need public safety communications or we need utility communications or if there's any communications that the schools use, there are a lot of public need, there's a lot of public need for telecommunications that we want to analyze. And as such, there may be township municipal property that make good host for wireless towers. So outside of the LI and the GI districts, we want to look at if we want to have certain types of standards if something is located on municipal property. It might be a more streamlined process. But something we'll look at in more detail in terms of what the possibilities could be. But there are other areas of the community. We've, we've, probably every quadrant of the community, we've had the wireless industry inquire on wanting to do a tower or wanting to see what the regulations may be in the future in terms of where they might want to go. So many of the industry representatives are waiting patiently to see what the outcome of the process is. But, and I know that many of them want the process to be expedited. We're playing catch-up with a lot of our regulations, because they haven't been updated in a number of years. But we're moving forward as diligently as we can without rushing through anything or missing anything as we're going through. So we'll continue to go through this. We hope to go through the draft throughout the winter. And maybe by early to mid-spring, we may have a draft where by that point, we may have had a public hearing.
Real quick, to the chair, if I may. So, Patrick, I, I just want to get a couple of bits of information. I know the State of Michigan is working on its towers program based upon co-location and availability. Meaning if there is a provider that comes to the State of Michigan, they have a multitude of sites that they're actively marketing and/or promoting for tower location. Didn't know if there are state-based, state-owned sites in and around our 35 square miles that, one, the state has an opportunity to work with cell providers on. And then, two, are there any areas within the framework of the 35 square miles that might be State of Michigan-owned, whereby they can move forward with some of these projects that they're looking forward to, to, to doing?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question, and that'll be part of our consideration as well. One area that comes to mind is there's some property that's owned by M.DOT, and it's the old rest stop along northbound I-275, that's south of Ford Road. It's a fairly sizable land area. And that's a land area where we've, we've heard from the wireless industry that there may be some gaps in coverage. Now, different gaps, as we know, depend on the different providers and where their service maps and infrastructure is located. That is one such facility where there may be some interest. And something that we want to consider, because we want to look at other available areas where that may be a site we look at, but if there's a more suitable site elsewhere in the area where it might not be as close to residences or for some other type of reason, we'll want to look at that to see if, you know, the state-owned property should be on the same level as township municipal property, where we may have a little bit more control over the equipment that the township has on the tower. But definitely something that we want to work with the state on and make sure that if they have available land area, that they're potentially hosting a tower, that we're working with them on that.
And just from our colleagues, that is, that's a state initiative. By the way, the Whitmer administration, that is, it's, it's not, it's not new. It's been around for at least the last two or three years.
It's been around longer than that.
Yeah.
It's been around 20 years.
All right, all right. I know that the latest push...
It's definitely not Whitmer, but anyway.
I know the latest push has been with some team members that I, I know of that are actively looking at Western Way County townships in and around the Beck Road corridor. Many gaps up and down Beck Road, many. Yeah, I got to tell you, it's, where I live, there's, it's a huge blind spot. So, depending upon your provider, right?
Right.
I tell everyone, the, the big cell company that starts with a V has... Yeah, I think I did that right.
Does it rhyme with Horizon?
Yeah, I, I didn't say that. But there, there are many gaps in the Beck Road corridor. And there are state-owned sites, i.e., you've got the parks that are at Aitken Beck and some other spots. Even small parcels of land where they do have a little bit of autonomy. So I think it's best that we, we work with our state partners to be able to make sure that what's happening here, including, and I knew a whole lot about the, the rest stop and the plans there.
Let the state to get the benefit of those opposed to the township.
Yeah, absolutely. I hear you. But I just want to make sure that we are working with the state to make sure things aren't happening without us, right? Yep.
Yeah, were you, I don't know who was on the board when we had a, a project come before us for, at a church, like up this part?
The fellows agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the fellows.
Yeah.
I wasn't on the board, but I was on the other side of it.
Oh, my gosh. When we had, we had so many people come out and, and say that, you know, that cell towers cause cancer.
It was all Westland people came out.
Was it? Oh, my gosh. I don't remember how we ruled on that, but...
Well, I know the former planner basically kind of torpedoed it.
Oh.
It would have been the early two, like 2012, 2013 type of...
Was it that long ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just remember people were out with their, their, their torches and, you know, just furious about it.
Originally, the plan was, it was Verizon wanted to do it. We wanted to do a deal with the township to go on the golf course. The planner shot it down. Hospital do, so we went to the church. And they were anxious to do it.
Sure.
People that lived on the other side of Hanan Road were just...
It's junk science, but anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that the state's program is kind of overlays. And we want to be aware of it. Sorry about that. Back in your hands, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the things...
I'm, I'm sort of a cynic when it comes to the whole state thing and that, and that whole...
Right, everyone?
Yeah. Anything, well, we haven't adjourned yet, so...
We might not for a while, if you keep talking about how great we're doing.
Don't say another word.
Is there anything else, Patrick?
Nope.
I'll entertain motions to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, ma'am chair.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee, all in favor of adjourning. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, so we will reconvene at...